I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
A second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-third?
Motion. Sure.
Comments or questions? All in favor? Pat, could we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, immediately before the next meeting, the board then has an executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Thank you. And now, is there any public comment on any items that are not on the agenda tonight? Uh, yes, Danny?
Yes, uh, recently, the, uh, the board has took the proper step of having an energy audience who respectfully, uh, promoted. So, I think, and I'm just here to inquire as to whether the board has yet acted upon the recommendations that were tendered or that matter is still pending.
Uh, from what I know of, the, uh, report recommendations was sent to, uh, the contractor that we use over there for him to evaluate. I do not believe we have his response here.
Very good, thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Um, does anyone else have any public comment on any items that are, that are not on the agenda tonight? Oh, Danny again.
I have a different topic. Uh, I was looking for, uh, Chris, I didn't see him up here at the diet, but I thought I'd ask, uh, how we're doing with, uh, new gardeners? Do they have any available beds for them at the, uh, community garden?
Uh, I'm not sure. Yeah, I think we'll pull up again, but I, I can make a note and ask him tomorrow.
Fair enough.
Monday, excuse me.
Thank you, ma'am.
No problem. Why, you have extra gardeners?
Oh, it's all, oh, we keep meeting people having.
That are interested?
Yes.
Yeah. Take their name, well, I'm sure you do, take their name and number and we can reach out to them for other things. Um, okay, any other public comment on items that are not on the agenda for anybody on Zoom or anybody here? So, wait a minute, uh,
No.
Can we, can we mute?
Who's this?
Oh. Okay, so now, is there anybody on Zoom that wants to make, uh, a public comment on any non-agenda items? If you could just raise your hand or something, so we know that you mean to speak? Okay, uh, so next, we have announcements and upcoming events. So, this morning, we were very fortunate to have, uh, David Pierce, who was a reporter on the Pocono Record. He recently wrote a book on Tox Island. So, we were lucky enough, um, the historical commission met this morning and he came and he was a guest speaker and he spoke all about that topic. So, I have an early, uh, Christmas present for Mike and Mark. Signed copies of his new book, so, um, to Mike.
Thanks.
You're very welcome.
To me?
Huh?
They write it to me?
He did, he wrote it to you and to you, Mark.
Nice, thank you.
So, um.
The few minutes I was able to stop in, it was very nice.
Yeah, it was pretty fascinating and who knew it would be such a, such a thick book on, on Tox Island and how it came to be, so, um.
But no idea how long it was last.
Yeah, that night. For a long way, so, uh, our Delaware River is the largest undammed river in northeast, uh, America, so, um, Revitalize Two O Nine Committee, just a quick announcement, we are looking for members, so anyone who is interested, uh, please send an email to Michelle. Um, on April fourteenth, there will be a dedication at ESU of Matt Connell Way in memorance of Matt Connell. Um, on the fifteenth, there will be a ribbon cutting for Micasa Sukasa, which is a new restaurant in the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza. And, um, Tractor Supply has posted that their opening day will be the twenty-ninth now, instead of tax day. But, um, to give you a chance to get your tax refunds back to, to do that. And there's a quilting class in April, uh, at the community center, so, uh, send us a quick email if you're interested. So, I don't know, Mike, Mark, if you have any announcements or any, anything upcoming, okay? Um, with that, we do have full committee reports, uh, for all the committees and departments in the township. So, um, I would make a motion to accept all of the committee and department reports as presented. Um, these are always included with the minutes that are kept online and they're over on the side table if anyone would like to take them home. For, uh, any comments or questions?
I, I would just say that, you know, there, there's some minor edits that could have been done, but for the most part, they, they have the spirit of, of what each committee is doing and so I'm not, just so it's understood, it's not a hundred percent correct.
Okay, we'll be happy to take your edits then. Uh, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, Michelle, has there been any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay, any, uh, and now that brings us to bid opening and possible award.
Okay, well, we opened the bids, uh, the last meeting for, uh, dumpsters for spring and fall cleanup. We review them and I make a motion to award to GNS Containers, who was a low bidder at twenty-nine ninety-three per yard.
Uh, second, um, why were they so much lower than everybody else? Any idea?
They just wanted to work more.
Any other comments or questions?
Are you local?
They're up in, uh, Old Fan? Up by Dunmore.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that brings us to, uh, the public hearing. So, now we are up to the proposed ordinance amending the Middle Smithfield Township Code of Ordinances by adding chapter one thirty-four, which is maintenance of properties and establishing regulations for maintenance of properties within the township, providing for remedial action by the township in specified situations and prescribing penalties for violations of the regulation. So, first, I would make a, uh, motion to open the public hearing.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Will you have a copy of the before this? And the regulations that you have before you, by turn, to implement this?
This is, yeah, this would be, well, this is only, this is a brand-new chapter in code ordinances, so this is, this is pretty extensive. If the alternative for this town, for the township would have been to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code and this board felt that was too, a little bit too extensive for purposes of Middle Smithfield Patrick. So, what you have in front of you is actually a very tailored down form of a property maintenance ordinance. It's actually very similar to one, uh, of the other local municipalities that have adopted in the last few years.
Well, why don't we get a second for discussion?
Yeah, why don't we get where we're gonna be?
So, so I made a motion to open the public hearing, is there a second, Mike, seconds, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we can have a discussion and you'll have every opportunity to, to be heard.
Okay.
You know, for it, so not to, so, um, just before I turn it over to Pat to run the public hearing, at which there'll be an opportunity for everyone to be heard. Um, for the record, I, I just wanted to, um, just, I guess, give a few words of, of introduction. Last Board of Supervisors meeting, we were happy to pass, um, the Revitalize Two O Nine Ordinance, as well as the Revitalize Two O Nine Committee. So, the Revitalize Two O Nine Grant Ordinance, we were happy to pass, was to provide for a grant program for folks whose property is on and facing Route Two O Nine and Milford Road to, um, improve their properties and improve the appearance of it. So, this grant program provides for, uh, twenty thousand dollar projects, of which the township could, could give up to ten thousand dollars and the property owner would match, and the idea would be to improve the appearance of Two O Nine. Because after we've done the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plan study, it was pretty important to, uh, residents of the township that are, the front door of our township, the main street, was, um, was looking at the best that it could possibly can, and there are certainly properties there that could stand to be improved. So, with this new proposed ordinance, it is there to give more tools to the zoning department to enforce, um, the, the, what we have, um, at a, at a greater level. For example, um, our zoning ordinance has some things in it against properties that aren't looking very well or that are unsafe. So, if someone had an unkempt property, even on Two O Nine, um, usually what, the only thing the zoning ordinance could accommodate it with was, say, junkyard. So, the zoning department would send a notice of violation saying, "You have a junkyard property, please clean it up." And the owner of the property would come back and say, "But wait, I'm not selling anything, so it's not a junkyard." And it really didn't have much teeth to go after and it was very frustrating. Um, I saw buildings that have things like pieces of metal coming apart that could fly off with the next stiff wind, pieces of siding, uh, gutters, all manner of things like that. Um, our current zoning ordinance doesn't allow us to send a notice of violation other than to follow the commercial code, um, the UCC, which just says, "Secure the building, make it safe so that people can't go in it." But it doesn't say much about fixing it, it just says, "Make it safe." And now, we're still stuck with an eyesore that's now got a fence across it. So, um, we have dilapidated buildings now with this new ordinance, as you can see with things in there. Our zoning ordinance can actually correct things that, for example, are on our commercial corridor, buildings that have sat vacant for years that are, are not looking good at all. So, that was my preface to, to that before I turned it over to, to Pat.
Sure, so the public hearing is gonna open, this is, uh, a public hearing, it's been advertised pursuant to, uh, the Second Class National Code in the, uh, Pocono Record, uh, just very quick, and I did a very good job of summarizing. It's a property maintenance ordinance, uh, addressing, uh, property maintenance requirements, uh, and potential penalties, uh, for properties within the township of Middle Smithfield. Uh, this is a public hearing, uh, so at this point, unless there's any questions or comments from the board on the ordinance, I think I can, we can hand it out to the public and see if there's any public comment coming from both boards. So, with that, are there any questions or comments on the proposed ordinance from the public?
So, is this commercial or residential?
It, it applies to the entire township. So, it could be enforced, uh, but the idea isn't for a zoning officer to go sailing around in a car looking for violations, but we've always been complaint-driven. So, if somebody who is living next to a dilapidated, they would call and they would have standing and they would make the complaint.
Well, as you know, this is township, you are really obviously a real public. There's a lot of elements specifically here, but when I came here, I was born, now I'm here. And we are all over with this school pass. I feel that this is probably more increased in maintenance that is not even necessary. Because like I live in my community, we already have a similar board in the community there, right? Telling us what to do, when not to do this and that, and after us for everything, right? So, this is gonna be telling you guys to come into our community and do this too?
I, if somebody were to make a complaint that you had something serious, uh, you know, and again, the complaints are prioritized too. You know, there's a, we only have some.
Because there's a lot of neighbors that, for some reason, want it, just don't like some other neighbor.
That's true.
And, uh, my concern is that this township specifically, what is Smithfield, uh, has places that have, like, next door, right? Houses next to each other, the yards are very small, easy to upkeep, but have a lot like us. In my community, we have from one acre, and I guess we have a neighbor that has over thirteen acres. That's what we're gonna apply to.
Yeah, well, i- if you have thirteen acres or if you have thirteen feet, the idea is not to have it unkempt, that's all. I mean, you're, you're, you're talking about, you know, the burden and difficulties of living here and the expense, excuse me?
Like, uh, let's say, okay, our cross-expect, you have all those weeds right now, you can see them.
Right, right.
Is that gonna seem better? Is that what this is?
That would be overreaching, I mean, letter as the law.
It's the same.
Understood, but the, the spirit of the ordinance is so, properties are not unkempt, that you don't have garbage, you don't have junk cars, um, you know, you don't have tires all over the place, whatever the case may be. That's the safeguard, whether it be seniors or other, she, it affects your property value. You know, if you have a decent house and the guy next door has three broken-down cars sitting in the front yard, that's gonna affect you. So, the whole idea is to make, is to try to keep the entire township as, as clean as possible, quite honestly. I mean, you look at two, you know, any road, we have, you know, road cleanups because of the garbage on the side of the roads. I mean, we have tremendous amount of effort and time and expense just trying to keep our own roads clean.
Well, let us tell you something. Don't take I know many people that don't have three or four cars for some reason in their property.
I'll take it, they're right on Monday.
Maybe that maybe the brake pedal hard and then we come out there and, uh, maybe they didn't transition and they don't wanna get rid of the car because they're planning to store later, you know, fix it in the car.
And if it's registered insured, they can keep it, it's not, it's not a junk car, that's fine.
Also, um, the height on grass.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, who came up with that?
Well, that was from, I think, the international.
I wouldn't have people going around with a, with a topage rule measuring every problem?
No, we don't have.
I don't think that's what I would do that.
That's not the spirit of the law.
Because I already had that experience in Rochester, New York, and I had a property out there where they inspected, they come with a rule to measure the grass, so this is where this is meeting, you guys are open the door to a lot of things with this, and this wasn't done, but you guys got together over a weekend and came up with this, this is a lot of planning, a lot of months.
Sure.
So, why pay to give more time for more people to be recognized, to know what's going on, so they can come over here and express their feelings about this? I don't know about you, Nick.
Your question has two parts to it, the first part of, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, the first part of it is, we just don't have the manpower to run around with yardsticks measuring people's grass. We're mostly concerned about the front door to our township and the heavily, and the heavily tra- and heavily traveled roads to tourist spots, that's.
It takes like you don't have them, sir.
I don't even think we got you, this is a public hearing and folks are supposed to, yeah, but folks are supposed to be sworn in and.
No. It's, it's, it's not a conditional use.
Yeah, 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 so, so that's the first part, and the way the zoning department works is that it's, it's complaint-driven. So, when the zoning department gets a stack of complaints, they address the most serious ones first. And if, if you're asking if a, a, a person whose weeds are eleven or whose grass is eleven inches tall after several weeks of rain and they've been on vacation, that's not their concern. As Mike went over, it's really, it's really the well-traveled areas that are for, that are leading to and from tourist destinations and our businesses and, and like, um, so, so that's the in, the intent of it. As to where this all came from, this is a, I mean, Pocono Township has something that's very similar and, um, we did not want to adopt the international, uh, code because it was far more restrictive than it. Now, the second part of your question, which was about the public notice, I mean, it, it was in the newspaper, it was posted online on our website, it was posted on Facebook, it, we did, we posted it in our HOA boards, um, which were not required. We've, we've gone above and beyond over what we had to do. Yes, sir.
Again, things have changed dramatically since we've been here.
Hmm.
Back then, you got information through the Pocono Record, now the Pocono Record that did something is dead. Almost nobody's there, and that's the truth.
Great.
The thing is that if people paid their taxes, if you have their addresses, for something so important, why do you kind of like send a letter to every resident of the township, don't they just, or, or whatever? This is serious matter, this is serious matter.
And so, if, if you're right, it is a serious matter, and this township has not had a proper maintenance code on its books, but every, pretty much every other municipality instead of concerned it does. And with respect to the notice, as the chairwoman indicated, you complied with everything required under the law for notifying the public about the adoption of this order potentially this evening, and they've actually posted it in additional locations that's not required under the law. Um, whether or not, uh, your request that notices of ordinances be mailed to everyone in municipality, that's not required under the law, and I don't know, uh, I'm assuming it would be a budget line item, uh, for the board to consider such a request, but, um, with respect to the notice of this evening's hearing and the potential adoption of the ordinance, the township has complied with what's required under the, under the Second Class National Code.
So, when you are running for, we, we get like hundreds of meetings, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, the residents don't deserve not even one letter for this township about certain examples of work.
The, the mailers that you receive are from mostly state representatives, not from people sitting here. Number one, we, because we don't have the budget for that either. I understand your frustration that you didn't get a letter in the mail for this. We did our very good, level best, um, people have actually asked us to have this property maintenance code, uh, we do have a code.
I think this goes above it.
Above?
It goes above it. One thing is that you put, okay, um, definitive properties, whatever, this is going to be much further than that. People really don't know until you live through it, they haven't used it, that's what I'm hearing.
Well, what I can tell you is this, we, we passed resolutions and we passed ordinances and we had, uh, a zoning ordinance too. And the zoning ordinance has changed many times over the years, and the way zoning ordinances change is because residents and citizens like yourself voice their opinion, and when we see that something isn't working, then it's changed. So, this, this was, this was adopted because, you know, or we are considering adopting this because we are responding to complaints and requests that we've received. Now, if at the ti- it, it isn't, you still have another bite at the apple, if this is, if you, if this has the effect that you feel that it would, um, residents will certainly let us know, they'll certainly come to public meetings such as this and voice their opinion.
Will the residents get a second chance to review this before you guys pass it, or you're planning on passing this today?
Well, we could table it, we, we could very well table it this evening, uh, and then, well, I, I will not.
Having a second reading, maybe making a, the aggressive.
But without, it's possible that we could table this tonight, but without mailing every single resident, how do you suggest we reach everyone?
Well, there, I mean, there's nothing requiring the board to do any more notice than you've already done, and clearly, sir, you were notified because you're here tonight, you, you learned about the public hearing, potentially adopting the ordinance, whether by reading the Pocono Record, seeing it at one of the locations that they posted it, or seeing it on someone's Facebook post, you were made aware of it because you are here to see.
The rules, very super wide, uh, with one of this, uh, they're not indebted by us, not you, sir. Did you have any move?
Did we, I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear.
Do we have anything to do with it? Well, I mean, it, it was prepared, we directed our solicitor to prepare it, correct, yeah. Absolutely, I'm not, I, I would, I would defend that.
And I said, okay, uh, tell me something without reading.
I'm, I'm not here for a test, I mean, but I can tell you, I can tell you, I've been, I've been a supervisor for twelve years. Absolutely, I gave you my copy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've been here for twelve years and there are properties, okay, that's great, and, and there's properties that look like shit and have looked like shit for twelve years and they do nothing about it, because we don't have any way to enforce it, listen, we have no way to enforce it without something like this. Those properties will stay looking the same way for the next twelve years if we don't adopt something to enforce that. We're doing this for, for the betterment of our township.
Next door, you don't have to go further than that.
Where, Foxmore?
Nobody's following a car, that'll be, well, any day, any day, something's gonna fall, a wind's gonna fall, it's not gonna be somebody there.
Wait, you.
They're gonna get really hurt.
You're talking about Foxmore?
Same thing about, uh, uh, I don't know, I've climbed a restaurant down Two O Nine, I'm not gonna mention it, the meeting, they're flashing, hanging off the roof, at some point, the wind's gonna blow it off and it's gonna hit, somebody putting gas in their gas tank.
So, we're physical.
That's what this is for. We don't have a way to go after that.
This is why we need that, so we can, don't have anything.
That they can use to go after those problems, I'm gonna call them problem properties.
Right.
And I think you've heard multiple times this evening from this board that it's not the intent of the township to go measuring the height of the grass, it's, the intent is to give them a tool to, to, when people complain about one of those problem properties that just aren't fixing whatever they need to fix, it gives them the tool to go after them and require them to do it. It's not, it's not a tool, it's not, the, the intent is not a tool to go after.
Not a personal, you look at it?
No, I do not, but then.
Okay, so if you drive to Pocono Country Place, right there?
So, this is, I would.
Okay, where we live, we live on the other side, which now with the vaginal erosion, uh, uh, Pocono Forest, and all the properties are large. My setup on the road, right now, is like seventy feet. The setup on the road from here is only like, some, some of them fighting. They always don't handle grass, we have extensive amount of grass in this, and there are people that actually have problems keeping on. I mean, I, I had problems keeping on too, it took hours, 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 and it's taking two years to come back.
So, the point is, is, is one of your neighbors gonna complain that your grass is twelve inches tall? Because the intent of this ordinance is not for us to go out there with a tape measure, but we have to have some kind of a tool that we can go out there with if there's a complaint. I can tell you, for, I, I would almost guarantee you, One Thirty Four Six Building Instructor, A through P, is gonna be a tenant that calls on a landlord. All these things about buildings being disrepair, it's gonna be a tenant that calls on a landlord because they have, they're renting it non-safe property, and you can say, as, as a resident, well, they can just go rent someplace else, not that easy.
No.
You have a nice place you're renting, you want it to be nice, you don't wanna have cracks in the.
We do have a board, it's like having a good township, yes. We do have a board, but we live in our community.
Unfortunately.
Pay for the road where we pay for the snowshoe, you, you guys don't.
Unfortunately, too many times the HOAs call us or a resident in an HOA calls and says, "I've been to my board meeting three times," and they won't do anything about it, "Can you help?" Because every time your HOA needs to get an attorney involved against one of your residents, then it becomes too costly and you want the township to get there, but it's not you, but the HOA. I've heard it many, many times, I'm sure the other supervisors have as well.
Mm-hmm.
Then when the HOA doesn't work out, then it becomes a township problem.
My last comment is, uh, I don't know where you came from, where you came from, where you go. I came from Riverdale, New York. When I moved here. And I came here for a little more space, a little more, you know, for the schools, they were grade schools, you know, we got some good stuff. My, my son graduated from there, my daughter graduated from there, my daughter's son married soon. And she has her kids, my son has some kids, they're gonna rest after, they're gonna be here too. Eight grandkids total. But this is not good. We're becoming another, you know, curious, you're saying, with all these regulations, up, up to regulations, up to regulations. Yes, we can accept her or move on, but, uh, it's shameful. It's shameful.
Uh, yes, then.
Every day when I head over toward the uh compost facility, I find myself passing by. Resca and elementary school. And the the property that we keep the adjacent to the school sandwiched in between the uh. Pocono High Summer Camp or whatever it's called over there.
Oh, Pocono Springs and.
Uh, but anyway, there's uh two structures on that immediate property, uh both in. Condition of imminent collapse. So I'm just wondering with respect to this particular ordinance. Doesn't necessarily take a complaint in order to trigger an action? Or in fact, does your zoning officers still have his own liberty? To evaluate such circumstances that they can depend on that?
Well, certainly if they see something dangerous, they are going to do something about it if they see it. So if they're out that way and they see it, if you're asking, does it, does it need a complaint? For something to happen, if they're out on an inspection and they go out on inspections for things like move in, move out ordinances. Um roofs or or building or something like that, and they pass it, they certainly, yeah. I mean, the sewer enforcement officer, all the sewage enforcement officer also was. He was on a call to help someone with their septic and he passed something that he thought was dangerous, which was. A a neighbor uh that had a lot of gravel piled on top of their. Septic mound and a- and it was completely covered and they were worried that. If treated like a parking lot, driving over a septic mound was not a good thing, so he he did something. About it. But again, to speak to this gentleman's concerns, I I don't want anyone to think that the zoning officer is driving around looking. For small infractions. It, you know, it creates more work for themselves. They can't get some important items. Like what you were talking about. And if it's any reassurance to you, sir, I have five and a half acres and everyone in this room. Uh even Ruben in the back can testify that at no time is my grass under ten inches. Because I just can't manage it. I only manage pathways and like that, and none of the neighbors have an issue because. They also live in the woods. You know, so that's, the intent isn't to manage the woods in this manner.
Does uh, would you still feel township go all the way to four forty seven?
Yes, yeah.
The left bay is how it used to?
Oh, you mean the penist- on um he was talking about, yeah.
That's one of these.
Oh, yeah. Believe me, you can drive. Through our township and any township and you'll you'll see. Numerous examples of of what has to be removed or or cleaned up. Yeah, so again, I mean. Huh?
I did five years with Manchester.
Right.
I know very well which is and which is not.
Right. Alright, so we've got it ready.
Debbie, Debbie has it.
Question, just suggest. Part of uh what this gentleman's discussing is the fact that there may be a. An unsightly property where you have someone who and not paid to have this. Free to clean up. So I know that the revitalization is you have to come up with half of it. And to to apply, but that's only two oh nine.
Right.
So I would think that there might have to be some sort of a program available. To help those people who can't clean something up. Once it's been determined that it's a health hazard or that it's a danger, that kind of thing. And I'm thinking that that would make it a no palatable. Uh resolution. Certainly, cutting your grass is one thing. And they only have them in packs because you have only packs. So that that part applies. Uh but I would think that some of these folks may not be able to have the wherewithal to create a safe area. And I don't know how yet. I'd have to think about it, if you have to think about it, but. There has to be some way in which they can uh get some sort of help and assistance to be able to do that.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Okay, so are there any other comments from the public this time? Saying none, you can close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Uh yeah, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
All in favor?
So now if the board wanted to kind of make a motion uh on the proposed property maintenance ordinance, we'd be appropriate at this time?
Alright, so I will make a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Sure.
Uh any comments or questions other than what we've just heard?
Almost.
Yeah, from from anyone.
I believe you should. Hold it up for next meeting.
Well, we're still on a second for for discussion. So um Mike or Mark, if you would entertain tabling this until the next meeting?
Honestly, I don't believe it's necessary. I think we we advertise, like the net said, we we advertised it, we did more advertising than than necessary. Again, if if people are up in arms or feel that it's overreaching, you know, there's plenty of time to come to a meeting. I mean, there's plenty of time to to. Your voice to be heard.
And if, if this becomes problematic, it will simply be revised and changed again. I mean, I can't even remember how many zoning ordinances we've had. I mean, since I've been here. I mean, and that was one of the things in twenty twelve, it was like saying something like, what township has had? Six zoning ordinances in four years because the prior board kept changing it. So, and again.
And and and. In all, if you feel that. You know, that there's some compelling reason, you feel that there's, you know. People that are gonna be coming here that have questions about it. I mean, I'll give them the same answers I gave you tonight, but I mean, I can wait another two weeks, I don't care.
So are you making?
I'll make a motion to table it till the next, the next meeting, yeah.
So I'll withdraw my motion to pass. Um I will second your motion to table this until the next meeting.
Which is what day?
Twentieth?
Yeah, it's the twentieth, April twentieth. But I, we will not send a mailer to every single household in the township. You know what I mean? Uh we we, it's out, it's out there in every means possible that we have.
Why do you mark the meeting?
So.
Tomorrow morning. Letter on the news box. That you go where?
Sure.
To come and have at least ten people.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is there's a motion to table the ordinance until April twenty twenty twenty-three at seventeen.
Yeah, and and I seconded it, um I withdrew the previous motion. Uh so all in favor of tabling? Okay, so I did wanna say that we are closed. Normally, we have supervisor workshops on Fridays, Fridays from eight to ten. We're closed tomorrow. So um I mean. I'm always here and available if you have someone that wants to come for questioning, but. The fourteenth, you could, there's a supervisor workshop on the morning of the fourteenth. Um and that's the only one before the twentieth.
So many people work. I just say, my neighbor comes home like a nine o'clock every day. There's a lot of people that work that.
Can he send an email? Could he sell, could he send an email?
I will.
You know, he could do that too. Yeah.
But it would be very comfortable, very, very, at least ten people show up for this.
I I I think your point about the grass is very interesting because I can think of one street off of Kova and I, and just so you know. I've lived on Kova since nineteen sixty-two. Alright? I was born and raised here. I've seen the place go up, go down, go up again. But there's one particular street on Kova, and I'm not gonna mention it in in a public setting. But when I drove it last year, because there was a complaint about a residence that I wanted to look at. I looked at the grass heights in the neighborhood and one, one house. In the neighborhood that had a maintained yard. Everybody else's grass was waist high. And I just wonder what that person that took the time to maintain their yard felt about their neighborhood. Would they be somebody who's in here complaining? You know, is is that person gonna be somebody who's in here complaining? I don't know.
Out there. The properties, the the two big, well, well, two hundred big ones on the communities. One is called Pocono Forest that acre. The other is called Pocono Forest that land. Forest said. There are people coming from nature.
Yeah, which, and and if you drive Kova every day, like I think you do. And you get down towards Pocono Heights, there's a couple of properties right there, within a half mile of Pocono Heights. North of it that have an unbelievable amount of, I I don't know, stumps. Tractors, bulldozers.
What type of business and you guys?
There you go. Well, there you go. No, a ton of business.
Yes, there's a business. He's, he has a logging company.
Be willing to bet, yeah, he wouldn't have it. I'd be willing to bet he isn't. And the other fellow with the school bus.
Past supervisor.
And the other fellow with the school bus.
Yeah.
And everything that grew up after the big garage went up, that was, you know, the big garage was to store everything in. And now he's got all.
I'm talking about that too. I I I'm always like, wait, is Kova both commercial and residential?
What we need.
So is Kova commercial or residential?
Residential.
So there's no commercial?
Separate TK.
We do have it.
It's because TK, TK's automotive, but it's been there before zone.
Okay.
That was there before the zone.
Well, you know what? Twenty-five years here, this is the first time I know that this is a situation. So I I I thought that that, or think from the person. Had a commercial permit. So he does. Oh, interesting.
Alright, so there was a motion, I seconded the table. Did you vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, uh, all in favor, yeah, oh, we did, yeah. Sir, um, can you give me your name before you leave?
Wilson Paul.
Wilson? Yes, I recognize you. You talked to me years ago about. Yeah, you talked to me years ago about.
Five years in Manchester. I believe my grandson.
You talked to me years ago about uh parking tickets that the fire company.
But it's interesting that uh. And one of the ways that we can use the fire police, which I was. Is to let them issue tickets. To all these people that go to all our little malls and park on the blue zone. On the handicap zone. On the fire, the fire zone. And this is nonstop. And it's gonna work. People don't get attention and they don't care. And most of them are in New York City. That's one way that you could utilize the fire police.
Thank you, Mr. Kubon. Alright, uh that brings us to the treasurer's report.
Make a motion from our general count, one hundred and five thousand seventy-one dollars and twenty cents.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion from our sewer count, fifty-four thousand. Seven hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents.
All second, uh comments or questions? All in favor?
Alright. Motion from our golf account, thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Alright, that's it.
Thank you. Uh solicitors' report.
Thank you. The first item on the report is the resolution adopting amended child protective clearance policy. The board made a call before my time, you adopted a child protective clearance policy based upon state statute. Um that statute has recently been revised and uh therefore your policy needs to be revised. The real change, the really the only substantive change, if you compare the two. Is the new one removes the probationary uh time plan associated with hiring someone that's going to be. Uh working or dealing with uh children as a volunteer or employee of the township. Uh previously, the statute allowed for probationary time before they get their clearances. That. Provision has been removed from state statutes and you're, the new proposed child protective clearance policy has removed that probationary time period. And it is going, it is proposed to be adopted, revised, amended policy is supposed to be adopted by resolution. And I don't know if there's a resolution number.
Yeah. I think a motion, dub, regulation, oh, for twenty twenty-three, text two.
All second, uh comments or questions? All in favor? Oh, yes, sir, sorry.
Since I have records here. What exactly does that imply?
Since you have, I'm sorry, what?
What what exactly does that imply? So when the township has an employee or when the township accepts a volunteer that we. Work at the township, if those employees or those volunteers interact with a child. And two or more times throughout the course of the year, they need to go through the whole child clearance. I think there's an FBI search of child abuse, like a passive group. No, it's a, or a background check. Oh, just background checks. It's a requirement for those employees or volunteers that are gonna be dealing with children at the township to submit to and provide for a background check. There's three different values that they have out there.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second. And a question, I believe we voted all in favor. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, put a little stick. So mostly our, uh a lot of our community members, you know, parks and recreation. We do things for kids, so we just go through the background check.
Very good.
Right. Um, okay. Engineer's report.
There is no other items under my report, but I think we wanna talk about uh scheduling a special meeting for this.
That's right.
Ordinance review at this point, or do you wanna, we can wait until later in the meeting. I just didn't know if you wanted to do it now.
Are you ready to do that now? Do you have a calendar set?
For me?
Yeah.
Sure.
To schedule, schedule a special meeting to go over the zoning ordinance? Might as well do that now.
Mark, but.
Are you thinking evening?
I'll let this up to the board if you wanna kick around some dates and I'll hopefully be available.
Well, why don't we do it now? Why don't we just have a show do like that?
Well, if you have them open. The twelve? Wednesday, the twelve, that's next Wednesday.
Fine. Yes, we advertised.
Oh, that's right, and then you, it being a good Friday, you won't be able to get it in. I might be able to get it in the, alright. For Wednesday, when I, but for Monday and like. Thursday's no good. I don't know if anybody wants to do Friday the fourteenth. So Monday, the seventeenth? Or Monday, the eighth, uh Tuesday, the eighteenth?
Mondays, we cannot make a bond.
That's on uh this tenth. So the se- the seventeenth or the eighteenth for anyone? You do? Okay, so that's no good. Um.
We, do you want, I mean, we could try and do it on one of your regular meetings. I don't know how, I don't know what the board had in mind.
Well, the next, the next regular meeting is the twentieth. They have a work session on the fourteenth, it's advertised for eight o'clock. It's not specific, I mean, but the, the agenda would go out. You know, the day, I I get the agenda posted for Friday work sessions on Wednesday. So if zoning amendment discussions is added to the agenda, the work session is an advertised meeting for every Friday.
Okay, so let's add it to the workshop.
Are you okay with that?
Fourteenth?
Okay.
That, that was eight o'clock.
Did you need anybody else there? Did you need Tom Comit there or?
Uh. Well, I think we're gonna go through Tom Comit's letter, right? There's a common letter. And um I'm not sure how far we'll get. I mean, while we can start on the fourteenth, we wanna maybe consider. Coming up with another date either later in April or May. Maybe have, maybe, I don't know if you wanna try and put it on one of your regular meeting agendas and maybe advertise early. Uh, I'm not sure how the board wants to handle this. It's gonna, I think it's gonna be an ongoing process. Uh there's a lot to cover. It's gonna take a couple meetings.
So perhaps we can start at the workshop on the fourteenth and then discuss it at our meeting on the twenty.
Twenty, yeah, that would work.
And then we can add people. And then there would be your time on the fourteenth and then everybody who was in town, that would work. The next thing has to really come so fast down. Then we have a cruise.
Uh, not for the fourteenth, uh, probably. Whatever, yeah, you should determine if, if I need to be there. I think that's a, I think that's a good plan for now. And then we can come up with maybe some other nights. Or dates, if it's, if it corresponds with your regular meetings, that would be good. But if not, we can come up other dates.
Okay.
Let me hold off on that first one. Does anyone think of that? Definitely board. I mean, I'm, I'm like, that's a, I think the first one will be. Yeah, really, it was just parking, maybe bed really explicit and put on, so. So the fourteenth, at what time?
Eight. Okay. Is there anything else under this solicitor's report?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right. The extensive engineer's report.
Yeah. Um, yeah, it's the only thing, uh, on for, uh, this meeting is the Stormwater Mansion ordinance, um. With, uh, Monroe County Conservation District, the, uh, New Back and Six Seven, uh, model ordinance that got into. They had a memo go out on March twelfth, uh, specifically addressing, um. Buffer requirements, which has been, um, a hot topic amongst several municipalities, uh, in the Conservation District, uh, in the county. Uh, they have a May second, uh, deadline that they want, uh. Provides the hard management ordinances adopted, uh, to meet their, their timeframe, uh, and there's. A few other municipalities have expressed that that's made a difficult timeframe to meet, um. That being said, uh, where we're at, we've prepared a, uh, an updated ordinance trying to address, uh, their model ordinance requirements. And I think at this time, uh, I don't think it could go through in detail the ordinance, uh, but I had a few kind of questions for the board. I just want to get input on, see if there's any remaining tweaks that we need to make before, you know, getting it over the path for a kind of. File review. Um, and with the, with the buffer requirements, so. Uh, with the memo that they sent out, they basically gave three options. So one was to adopt the one hundred and fifty foot buffer width as a minimum. Uh, the second was in lieu of that, provide documentation, justification and research in the ordinance that would demonstrate. A, uh, narrower buffer width. Um, and then the third is the buffer width is reduced without justification, then ordinance to specification for alternative design. Basically replace the functions of a larger buffer, um. You know, our office, I, I, I asked around to see if there's any real documentation, justification, research that's been done that we could point to. And, you know, it's just not something that's widely available that someone's really produced work on. So unfortunately. I don't think really anybody's gonna be able to lean on option two, uh, for an ordinance. And so that, that basically leaves, um, option three, if we're not gonna do the one hundred and fifty foot buffer width, how we currently have fifty. Um, and, you know, what we're recommending is, uh, putting it into the section. Uh, one sixty fifteen, yeah, yeah, or a section where these buffers are discussed. So for each of the, the wetland stream and pond buffers, basically making a note that, um. You know, two, uh, BMPs, so these are basically stormwater, uh, features that are being put in series prior to discharging. To that feature, um, the BMPs are defined in, uh, VP has a, a manual that lists. A wide range of options that are made available. So it does give each individual developer a pretty exhaustive list of options to pick from. Uh, it gives, um, I think some, some leeway to. Uh, put together, I think, a reasonable combination of things, you know, gives the township. Uh, and us and developers some discretion as to what's appropriate on a case by case basis. Uh, and I think my other recommendation would be to, if you guys have a buffer averaging section, I think it's appropriate to keep that as well. To allow, you know, it allows it to go down to a, um. Minimum of thirty five feet in certain areas, as long as the average width within the property remains at least fifty feet. So, um, I guess the first thing was I wanted to see, does that sound appropriate to you? Is that the approach we want to take? Uh, or do you have any suggested adjustments that you want to make to that? Um, and actually, maybe if I can add one more thing, there was a section that said, um, the board of supervisors had the ability, the discretion. To basically grant a reduction down to thirty five feet, you know, not averaging buffers, but just like a straight thirty five foot buffer width. My initial instinct was that might be a section we're taking out as a small concession to some degree with the one hundred and fifty foot request. Um, and since you already have a buffer averaging in there, um, but, uh, yeah, I wanted to.
Yeah, I agree with eliminating that. There's no need for it.
Has anybody ever come in and asked for the thirty five foot?
Not since I've been involved now. No, I haven't seen that, um. You know, the most recent one that's come in, Mount Nevo.
Right.
They have, they're providing the fifty foot. Uh, entirely around that wetland with the expansion that they're planning to put in. So, um. I'm trying to think of, uh, I think Dollar General, uh, provided fifty foot as well, if I can recall correctly. But those are the last two I can recall that's. Coming with that, you know, if the life care facility were to go through, we would have to see how that would be handled, because they have to, um. You know, where they're crossing, you know, they're very near proximity to those wetlands, um. You know, they would have to go through chapter one oh five, permitting through the state for that, so. Uh, might be something that could be granted a modification, you know, assuming they have the proper permits, but. Um, yeah, I haven't seen thirty five.
My only concern with, with eliminating is that we don't know why it was established. And I don't think, you know, I don't think it would have been just arbitrarily, say, thirty five feet. My concern is that there, there's been some research done. And that's how it got to the thirty five foot.
But we, we created it, right?
Correct, but there's gotta be a reason why. That's what I'm saying.
There were a lot of things created before our time.
But it wasn't arbitrary. That's what I'm saying.
There were things created before our time network.
And I'd like to know why, that's all. Before we remove it, I would like to know why.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm trying to think.
That might be impossible.
Well. To some, to whatever extent possible, I, I, just to make sure it just wasn't arbitrary.
Michelle, is there a chat? Somebody want to chat with us?
Oh, there's two in the chat.
You need to move on.
Oh. That must have been for a prior.
Michelle, uh, is that something I could get my hands on would be, I don't know, if we could take a look back at the meetings when the. Stormwater Mansion ordinance would have been, so prior to the fall, the last, around, to see. You know, what was discussed and if that was specifically mentioned.
Yeah, we can look at the last ordinance prior to the one last fall, or, um, take a look and see when that was adopted and then we'll pull minutes.
Okay.
Planning commission.
So the, and the second point kind of ties in with kind of what you're, you're talking about, Mike. So one of the other things in their model ordinance that they requested. Um, I know to point the contention with other municipalities that they've been requesting or requiring that. Um, any relief from the buffer requirements be a variance granted by the zoning hearing board as opposed to a waiver of modification. Uh, our, our stance has been, that's pretty, uh, restrictive and. So we, we kept that out of the prior reports.
Agree.
Yeah.
Um. I think that's really it. So basically, it sounds like you're on board with the, those changes with the. Maintaining much of the buffer requirements and then we'll do some research on that original thirty five foot reduction.
Right.
Aspect of it. So it should be pretty minimal revisions as a result of that. I'll circulate it around and then pass our thinking over. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ben. Okay, that brings us to old business, which there is none. Um, and now we move on to new business. Um, I would make a motion to adopt resolution zero four dash twenty twenty three dash one to authorize dispensing of certain records.
Thanks.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay. So, uh, next is, um. Do I hear a motion to authorize advertising to hold a public hearing on the proposed nuisance alarm ordinance?
Motion.
Uh, any comments or questions? Um, I'll second, sorry, so that there can be comments or.
So I just want to make sure if we're gonna advertise a ordinance, I circulated a revised version. Uh, is that, is everyone agreeable, uh, to that draft? My understanding is.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe they're on page two, section eighty dash three. Uh, rather than twenty working days, would it be in an interest in increasing that to thirty working days?
Yes, I would, I would.
I think I got that request in one step.
Yes, yeah, I was. That would be great to see.
And, uh, except everything else is acceptable before the, the amount. Uh, having a third pulsing on be the triggering, uh, for the. And having it focused on the fire department.
Did we get, we only got back from Marshall's Creek, just.
I heard, I heard back from Marshall's Creek, Shawnee agreed with whatever the township wants to do.
Okay.
And I didn't hear back from Tim Roner or Kyle Roner. Um, I spoke to him on the phone and I emailed. All of them, my emails in that, including in that packet.
This is a, a request.
Were here or didn't provide any comments.
Sure.
Well, when I was there. Uh, yes, we had a loud roar that went off because the person had a dog or a cat. Was actually a false alarm, nothing there. So, yes, I believe as a resident, and then five months along the year. It takes a lot of these stories to get to the house. That we can use in a real situation. So I believe that, uh, finding those people. Would be okay, thirty forty dollars.
Three, or two, to get to.
Yeah, third time's when you get fined.
I was surprised to find out that. A third of the calls that Marshall's Creek Fire Department responds to are false alarm. So that was. A lot.
So my understanding is it would be a motion to advertise the draft ordinance, revised draft ordinance. With the additional revision of twenty to thirty days, um, for potential adoption at, is there a meeting if you want this advertised for?
Could we do it for the twentieth? Is that enough time?
Uh, I think so. It just has to be advertised once, um.
Yeah, I'm just, can we get it in the Pocono record by then?
Does it advertise once at least seven days before, right? So. One, two, three, four, five, six.
We should be able to.
I just, the question I always have is, when do, what's the date you have to get it into the paper? So you can get it into whatever.
I can get it in Monday or Tuesday. Um, actually, I, I would need it, to be safe, I need it Monday to get it in for the thirteenth. That's exactly seven days.
Yeah, just do the eleven, then May eleventh, like, kill yourself trying to.
Well, it's just to make sure.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if there's something.
The Pocono Record may say, oh, it's too late.
Right, right, so just make it May eleven.
Well. I mean, you're gonna be advertising the other one anyway.
Right.
You're advertising the part of your minutes for the twenths.
Right. Right.
Uh, because you table that, you're table action on that one until the twenths.
Uh, you send them to me Monday. Let's try it before eleven AM.
Let's try it.
The twentieth for this one as well. Is that what you're hearing?
Yeah.
We'll try, we'll combine the ads sometime to save a little money.
You can leave it for me, I'll be here. Hmm? You can leave it for me, I'll be here tomorrow.
Uh, no.
Hey, we're good.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, uh, Pat, you're up for the proposed new opioid settlement.
Sure. As the board made a call, probably about a year and four months ago, at the end of twenty twenty one, early twenty twenty two. Uh, you were notified by the county, the county has been the facilitator for these, uh, about the national opioid settlements. Uh, you, um. Participated in those settlements with those defendants at that point in time. This is a new batch of defendants in the national opioid settlement, uh, and they're asking for the municipalities in Monroe County that qualify. Uh, to also participate in these settlements. These would be with, uh. Walmart, Walgreens, CBS, Allergan and Teva or Tiva. Uh, it's very similar to the first round of settlement agreements. Each, uh, the state of Pennsylvania has to read it, reach a certain threshold of participating municipalities in order to qualify for. Uh, some of them, for a certain percentage of the money from the settlements. If we don't, if the state doesn't hit that threshold, these defendants may have the ability to pull out of the settlement. Uh, the way the state had done is they kind of passed it on to each of the counties. Monroe County has taken, uh, the, the, uh. Lead on this and have forwarded, uh, the proposed participation forms to each of the municipalities in Monroe County that have qualified for participating. Middle Smithfield being one of them. Uh, so what this would be, it would be a motion, uh, to authorize the township to agree to opt in. And execute the proposed settlement participation points for the settlement agreements with Tiva, Allergan, CBS, Walgreens and Walmart. And further approve and authorize the execution of any and all other documents or agreements related to it.
All second. Comments or questions?
You guys two, what are you thinking? The township going to get paid or the?
No, no, no. So, good question. There's no guarantee that the township's gonna get money from these settlements. But, uh, what happens is with the national, there's billions of dollars involved with these companies paying out to the states throughout the country. And the money that is being paid to the states can only be used for certain things. And those certain things or projects have to, have to basically, um, address. Uh, the opioid epidemic in the United States. So there are certain projects or programs that the money can go to. And some of those projects or programs may be in Middle Smithfield Township, I don't know. Uh, but there's no guarantee the township is gonna get any money, any money. But the more municipalities in Monroe County and the more municipalities in Pennsylvania that participate, there's more potential money coming to the state of Pennsylvania. Coming to the county of Monroe in order to help, uh, address the issue. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And again, the other, the other piece to this is if. Monroe County and or Pennsylvania does not hit a certain threshold of participating municipalities, there is a potential that these defendants won't. Proceed with the settlement and it will probably. Makes sense? Sorry, I should explain that earlier.
Yeah, all good.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Michael, I believe you have something on the bike park.
Yeah, make a motion that, uh, Mills Smithfield participate. Fifty fifty partner with Smithfield for, uh, LBL engineering for design. And construction management services for, uh, repairs at the bike park.
All second. Comments or questions? All in favor? Yes.
Well, the, the bike park down in Smithfield.
Nope.
What?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The bike park down in Smithfield, uh, there is some reconstruction that has to occur to achieve. Um, drainage and other requirements from Conservation District. Um, that requires engineering. Um, engineers gonna design it, send it out for bid for construction and then. Um, that engineer will monitor construction to completion. Um, that engineer will monitor construction to completion, so he can close that out.
Okay, I raised a question because I was here on, uh, representatives from that part.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And they, and we're looking at, um. The two percent of options, specifically having groups like the Pennsylvania Gardener assist with planting things.
Yeah, but that's how we got.
Right, so is that now by the West Side or?
That's how we got to where we are today. Um, it, it, it's a bit more. Intricate, I guess, is the best way to describe it, um, that you need professionals to do it. You know, we, we went with volunteers and, you know, the grand concept. Years ago, but it, it's, it doesn't satisfy what conservation needs to, to sign up on the project.
Yeah, my, my understanding was the materials what used weren't, uh. It weren't good enough.
Well.
So it, it doesn't, it doesn't drain well.
Right, and it has to be raised.
So even the plants weren't gonna keep, even the plant roots weren't gonna keep that in.
Right.
Yeah, there's, there's an elevation issue, right?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Just a general comment. Are you like Smithfield, Little Smithfield, like Germany, Eastern Washington, remember? That is written. We also share the library. We share the fire department. And who knows what else? Is it possible that we can start slowly integrating?
Integrating what?
The two towns.
Make, you want us to acquire Smithfield?
You should, I would start like that, you know, like.
You want us to acquire?
Library, we shared the fire department.
Well, it would be an undertaking to acquire Smithfield, but, um.
Is there something that could be like the future? It's not a natural, but you're gonna cut out, uh, excessive workforce, excessive money.
That's true. I'm, I'm sure a lot of people in Smithfield would be happy too, but, um.
Actually, we'd be.
We should.
We'd be more than doubling the taxes for the people in Smithfield.
Right.
They pay, I'm sure that they would not be in favor.
I, I would suggest you, you suggest that to Smithfield first and see how you make out, and then let us know.
Well, I guess, we should be part of the, oh, more, we should be part of, we should be a Y C A, we should, uh, postal.
Absolutely.
We share a lot of.
Yeah, absolutely. See what they say.
Okay, so, uh, I'm calling for a vote on, uh, Rivers Edge Bike Park. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only thing I'll mention is it does say it was gonna be, uh, good for sixty days, that was February second. Chances are that it's still.
No, yeah, it's, it's, don't worry about it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so now, uh, the board has in your packet a letter of resignation from Gary Morris on the, uh, historical commission. Uh, while he will still participate in the historical commission, he needs to resign because. He prefers to sit on the zoning hearing board and as a zoning hearing board, uh, member, he cannot be on any other committee. So I would make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Gary Morris from the historical commission.
Certainly.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the next one's you too, Michael.
Make a motion to advertise the sale of, uh, five salt spreaders, two thousand eight GMC, five fifty five hundred. Two thousand and nine Sterling and two Jacobson aerators.
The comments are quite, yes, sir.
I do have. We once did say here. With, uh, that state went to the rest.
What?
We went to the rest.
What went there?
And that's.
And we had the auction out back.
No, it was, uh, no time ago.
Yeah, yeah.
I bought, uh, I myself bought a fire truck. And they.
Okay.
And, uh. That was like a day or two ago.
Okay.
Uh, I believe that the residents paid for it, couldn't.
Yeah.
I give it to the resident. To get a shot.
They do. They, it's gonna be on.
It's very much.
Correct. Correct.
That had salad on the local.
But, but as a taxpayer, wouldn't you wanna get the most for it regardless of who bought it?
I don't think it's gonna, time to jar to get more money just to please.
So we're supposed to go around and ask who wants to buy?
People that pay for it.
Correct, we're trying to recoup as much as we can. Why, why would we take less because?
Yeah, the, the, let, let's be very clear. There is a state statute that requires the township to follow certain procedures in order to. Secure and sell to the highest bidder. Uh, so I'm not sure, uh, it sounds like there's still.
I think, no, I think we should go back to how it was before. That's the way it was before, it's not local. With a local, with a local, uh, auctioneer.
Correct, years ago, we used to have other townships involved, whatever they wanted to sell, used to have it out back, used to have the guy with that big hat.
Yes.
Um, yeah, through cog, used to auction the vehicles out back, yes. And whoever came, it was people from all over the state that came. But yes, some local people. Absolutely, some locals bought it. Right, squires bought a bucket truck one time.
Couldn't, is the public able to?
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. Right, so memories of the public can go on municipal and do it just like.
Dealers are allowed to bid, not regular people.
No, that's not true. They're, they're not dealers.
Dealers, they're all.
No, you just have to register. You just have to register. Huh?
I'm there, I mean.
Yeah, you just have to register, correct. Anybody can register.
Yeah, but mostly dealers.
Well, maybe mostly, but, but it doesn't preclude anybody. It doesn't preclude anybody from.
But you're on municipal, right? You're on municipal, so you'll be able to bid on this.
Anybody can go on, right?
That's another point, the point is you gotta take, so we're talking local, most of the local dealers are there now. I think I don't do a dealer talking and they don't put in or, or anything, but they can come, it's municipal and they don't. Not fair for the locals, but pay this for your.
Actually, I believe it's more fair because we're getting top dollar for it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, any other public comment? On anything else? Yes, Debbie.
Sorry, I'm a little late. Um, from the library board or what else?
Yeah.
Any ask about the one, the other I almost just signed.
Oh, well, yes.
If they could have an update on what the sign.
I believe I gave the library an update on the sign, which is, I, we have all the paperwork. And a bid, and the board needs to. Figure it out.
You, you both need to.
Yeah.
Okay, there's nothing on their end.
Oh, the library wants to buy it, they're okay.
Yeah, the li, if the library would like to participate and share in the cost of the resting the sign, it would make it a lot easier for me. With the rest of this.
Would they have input on the design of the sign?
Yeah, they've already seen it.
No, I, I think there really is nothing, something that could have messages.
Oh, okay.
They want something that could have messages, so that they could, to say that we're doing this in public.
Right, no, we're. Okay. Thank you. All right, any other public comment?
The last one.
Promise?
That entrance that goes into four two from the, uh, Chatham Peninsula.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll be talking to a lot of people, and it is dangerous. Or because it's a square. It's kind of like a line, and then when people turn, they can go to, go over to the right. A lot of times they go over to the other one.
That, and that.
People that come the other way is. They can't see.
That's Penda.
That's Penda.
They were supposed to, actually, right across from Oak Road, they were supposed to straighten that road out, and they never did.
I think it could be better when you want, in every city. That'd be.
Yeah, that, that would be, I, I can't help you with that, that's Penda.
Can you write something on that or something?
Sure. They won't do anything, but I'll send them a letter.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Say.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I forgot to ask you to.
Are we still on, uh?